We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, February the 15th to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Mark? Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. If you will, please let's stand together as we salute and pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Blessed are those whose strength is in you, O God, whose hearts are set on a pilgrimage. Speak into the intermeshed chambers of our hearts, God, and into the heart of these chambers. Bless our pilgrimages we labor to preserve democracy, uphold liberty, and serve the American people faithfully. Grant us the insight of your wisdom and the shield of your truth and righteousness. Strengthen our resolve to serve responsibly in the courts of your kingdom. Strengthen our will that our service to you will not falter. Strengthen our hearts that we will show forbearance to each other. Remind us, then, that our strength is found only in you, and may we go from strength to strength as your people, as a country and as a county. We offer this prayer to you in your strong and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Commissioners, before you have your agenda, are there any items that you desire to add or remove from today's agenda? Here, none, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next would be the consent agenda. Are there any items to pull from the consent agenda? Here, none, under consent agenda this morning, you have the minutes of the February 1st regular session, tax releases and refunds, a budget amendment for DSS, and a budget amendment for donation for the Sheriff's Department. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Next, we have with us this morning Mr. Stewart Hill, representing Thompson, Pry, Scott, and Adams, who will give us the presentation of the 2020 Annual Audit Report, and you should have that audit report there for you in front of your desk. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you for letting us be here this morning. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Also, thank you for allowing us to do your June 30, 2020, audit report, so we appreciate that greatly. So you should have a presentation summary for the audit report that looks like this, and you should have a full audit report that looks like this. So we're going to go with this one because we don't want to be here all day. So with that, you know, we will go into it. And first of all, let me say that I'm substituting for Alan Thompson today. He had some other things come along, but at any rate, I'm pleased to be here. With that, we'll go into the presentation. If we can go to the next screen. Basically, the first items are going to be some general comments, followed by some required communications to governance, and the audit results, and any questions or comments. So that's our agenda here. It won't take very long. And feel free to ask any questions along the way. If I know the answers, I'll answer it. If I don't, and Craig does, maybe he'll help. If not, we'll get you an answer between us, so don't hesitate to stop me. Next slide. Okay. Basically, we just, this is some of the general comments. The types of opinions you could get on an audit report. Could be an adverse one, which is one you don't want. We could disclaim it, to say that, look, this is a mess so much that we can't tell what it is, so you don't want that one either. A qualified or modified opinion would be one that there was some significant and material things that needed to be adjusted, but all in all, it would still be, you know, not as bad as the adverse or disclaimer. The unmodified is the one you want, and it's the one you got. It's a clean audit report, and that's the one you would want to have. So the next item is, if you go to the next screen.
Go one more screen, please.
There we go.
This is the letter to governance. This is the required communication. I'll briefly go through the key things on that. We don't, I mean, you can read it anytime you want, but I'm going to just say, basically, it just says that how the audit went from our perspective, your accounting practices and procedures have been properly applied. We didn't have any difficulties with the staff or the information. Craig and his staff provided the information and the availability to answer questions promptly for us, so, you know, we didn't have any material misstatements, no disagreements or issues with the management. And basically, go to the next screen, please. Next slide. Okay. That's all what's going on right there in this letter. And then go on to the next slide. So sometimes there's cases where you have consultation with other auditors other than the representation from the predecessor auditor. I'm not aware of any of that, so basically, that's the only other auditors that we, you know, had correspondence with, and that was to get the representation from the previous auditor. And then next slide. Thoughts about the other auditing findings and issues in the compliance section, which I believe starts on about page 172 in the full audit report. We had some suggestions, basically, is what it is, but it's some findings that we had to put in there, but those were all in the Medicaid-type section, and it all had to do with the documentation. To our knowledge, there was no real cost, you know, no question cost on it, it's just the documentation being cleaned up a little bit. And that is typical with almost all counties. They're going to have some of that. It's kind of like, I use it like typos. There's going to be a typo somewhere, and I promise you, in this audit report, we do the best we can, but there might be a typo in there somewhere. We go through it, and go through it, and go through it, but if you look hard enough, I'm sure you can find one. And so that's kind of what I correspond that to. I don't want to make light of it. We did make some suggestions as to how to minimize that, and that's already been communicated and addressed, so, you know, that's, I just wanted you to be aware that that is in there. So that's where we are on that. Next slide. Let's go on to the next one as well. That's just general verbiage. And next slide. Okay. So now we're going to get into the meat of your audit report, some numbers and stuff. Go to the next slide. So you see, we're using a five-year trend, so you can see any kind of trend going on through this five-year period. We're not going to read all these numbers. This slide and the next two slides are numbers that came right out of the audit report, and this gives us the basis for the charts that are coming up. So if we can go to the next slide, and then the next slide, and then one more. This is what we're going to, all these charts are going to be generated by the three pages of all that, five columns of data, which, as I already said, was, came straight out of the audit report. So this first chart that you see is an analysis of your fund balance for the general fund. The blue bars represents your total fund balance, the red bars your available fund balance, and the green bars your unassigned fund balance. Your total fund balance is like the difference between your assets and liabilities, basically, that's a real crude, short way of saying it, but it's kind of your net of assets versus liabilities, pretty much. So your total fund balance in 2020 is about $39 million compared to about $33 million in 2016. Your available fund balance in 2020 is about $26.8 million compared to $24.4 million in 2016, and the unassigned fund balance is about $25.4 million in 2020 compared to $24.3 million in 2016. Your available fund balance is the total fund balance less any prepaid items and any state-restricted items. The unassigned fund balance is the total fund balance minus those same prepaid and the restricted from state, and anything that you guys have already assigned or committed to some specific category. So the unassigned fund balance is what is left over to be used at your discretion. Next slide, please. This is an analysis of your fund balance available and unassigned as a percentage of your general fund expenditures. The available is represented by the blue line, and the unassigned is represented by the red, and those are the percentages, again, of the general fund expenditures, and you can see the trend, how it has gone through this time. Your available fund balance is 25.38% in 2020, and the unassigned is 24% in 2020. Next slide. This is a collection of percentages for your taxes, and we have a comparison of Craven County, which is the blue line, and the red line represents counties, other counties in the state with population of 100,000 or more. I think you guys have probably 102,000 or something like that population, so that's the category you're compared with, so you can see how your percentages compare with the other counties. And then the other grayish-looking line is the statewide average of other counties regardless of their population category. Next slide. This slide represents your total property values and your total levy amounts. The first one being the property values in the red. Your property values were $10 billion in 2016, and in 2020, it was $9.6 billion. And the actual levies in 2016 was $46.9 million, and in 2020 is $52.8 million. Next slide. This is a breakdown of your general fund revenues by various categories, so that you can see, you know, where the largest revenues are coming from. And your ad valorem taxes is the largest, at 46.12%. The second largest is intergovernmental revenues at 21.79%. That's typically your, like, franchise taxes and ABC beer and wine taxes and stuff like that distributed from the state. And then third is the sales tax, which is the local option sales tax that's distributed back from the state to the county, at 16.54%. And then the others are the smaller ones you see there. Next slide. This also shows the revenues by those same categories, but it has the dollar amounts rather than the percentages, so you can see that in 2020, your ad valorem taxes, for example, was $53 million. Your sales tax was $19 million, and the intergovernmental was $25 million. Next slide. This chart represents, similar to the revenues, the expenditures and where the money is going to for the general fund. And in this category, you can see that your largest category is education, at 26.76% of your general fund expenses, followed by social services at 18.11%, and then third was the public safety at 17.81%. Next slide. And again, we've got the amounts for those as well, so you can see in 2020, your education was $28 million, your public safety was $19 million, and the social services was $18.8 Next slide, please. This slide, just when we talked about the general fund balance a minute ago, I think I already went through that. I got my head of myself, but basically, that tells you what the assigned and the unassigned and the restricted, and how that goes, how that is calculated. Next slide, please. Okay. So as I said in the beginning, you got the unmodified opinion on all major, federal and state programs, and just to wrap it up, that's a good opinion, that's what you strive for. Your staff did a great job. Their records were in good shape. You've got to, you're lucky to have that, because we have some that are good, like y'all are. We have some that's not nearly there, so. And again, it was a pleasure to work with Craig and the staff, and we appreciate that opportunity. And with that, if you have any questions, otherwise, I'm through.
All right, questions from the board. Commissioner Liner?
Sir, would you mind going over on the back page, the federal award findings? Are those three the ones that you were talking about that relates to typo errors and stuff?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Craig, do you have anything that you want to add?
No, sir.
Jack?
Yes, sir, I never pass up an opportunity. I agree with Mr. Hill. Craig, thank you for all your hard work and your team's hard work, and thank you. It's our first year with our new audit firm, and I think they did a great job, really enjoyed working with them. Mr. Merritt's here, if you have any questions, because the programs he's talking about typically fall under social services, where you have that last page. So if you have any questions, Mr. Merritt, he's here to help you. But other than that, thank you, sir, for your time this morning.
We appreciate it.
If I could, Jack brought up a point that just refreshed my mind. Last year, we had a findings that cost us some dollars because of the errors and the...
Right.
Do we have any this year?
No, sir.
No dollar loss at all?
No cost, it was more clerical.
Okay. And just for your information, board, we received a letter last week, the county manager and myself and DSS director from the state, and it gave in reference to last year's findings. And the letter that we received said that review of the county's response and evidence of corrective actions for the identified findings determined that required actions were satisfied. So everything from last year, the findings and the audit have now been, you know, the state says they're good, proceed on. So I thought that was good. It was very timely, so. Okay, thank you again. Please relate to all your fellow workers and everybody, that we appreciate their help and assistance.
I certainly will, and we certainly, again, we appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Y'all have a blessed day.
Same to you. Next is the Trillium Health Medicaid Transformation Report. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Mr. Peterson, come right on up.
All right, thank you for having me. Can I stand up here?
Yes, sir.
Right in front of y'all, okay. Well, can I take the mask off?
Yes, sir, please do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me, and I appreciate you inviting me here today. This is a little bit different than previous years. For the past seven years, I've been out here just giving you an annual update, but Commissioner Liner, who's on our regional advisory board, asked me to go through this presentation with you about this Medicaid transformation that's happening across the state, and I'll be going into great detail with that. I want to thank him for being on our board, and also Ms. Sheets, who's an attorney in town here in New Bern, who also serves on our regional board, so. Next slide. So, yes, okay. So we've been under a fee-for-service model, not necessarily Trillium, but the state has in the physical side, and Trillium Health Resources has been on the, we've been on the managed care side for several years now, about seven years, and so they're moving that, the General Assembly has moved that to the entire state going on a managed care model, and the purpose of that is to get integrated health care, along with mental health care, into one system. Next slide, please. So in 2018, they transferred this from a fee-for-service to managed care, and like I said, we've been already doing this, and this combines your behavioral health, your physical health, and your pharmacy benefits, and I'm going to go into a lot more detail about that in further slides. Next slide. So you'll hear terms, and I recall in 2018, going across all my counties and talking about the standard plan and the tailored plan. And so the standard plan is the insurance companies that are going to be managing the low-to-moderate-risk individuals in Medicaid, okay? The tailored plan, which is going to be Trillium, are going to be managing the high-risk individuals like we do today for the people with developmental disabilities, substance abuse, and behavioral health. There's another bullet in here that I think all counties need to be aware of, and I know the DSSs are very aware of this, but there's a specialized plan for children in foster care that the state is in the process of developing right now, okay? And that might or might not fall under us, okay? Next slide, please. So, like I said, the standard plans will cover the low-to-moderate risk, and there will be five insurance companies that do that, and I will tell you who those five are in the next slide, but the tailor plan, we will be managing high-risk individuals on a per-member-per-month, the PMPM. And one example that I always give of that is, right now, we manage all the low, medium, and high-risk individuals, and we get paid by the state a per-member-per-month to manage all the low-cost to high-cost individuals. So, and I'll just throw a number out there. Let's just say the state gives us $50 per member per month for the low to the high risk, okay? To the low to the high cost. Well, when we move to just being a tailored plan and only managing the high-cost, high-risk individuals, our per-member-per-month is going to go up. Okay? Great. On that also, we've only been managing the mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse services for an individual. When we move to a tailored plan, we're also going to be managing their physical health, all right? All of their primary care docs, all of their medications, and I'll go into a little bit more detail about that. Next slide, standard plans, let me talk about that. You can go to the next slide. So these are going to be commercial insurance companies that are doing this, and about two years ago, the state put out an RFP for insurance companies to apply to become standard plans to manage the behavioral health Medicaid individuals that we currently do today, all right? So in that, they awarded in February of 2019, AmeriHealth, Blue Cross, United, WellCare, and Carolina Complete Health, the awards of managing the low-to-moderate-risk individuals. Next slide. This is the map that the state has, which you'll see a little bit later, is different than our map as a managed care organization. These are the maps for the private insurance companies and the regions, and in the previous slide, there was one, Carolina Complete Health. They will be managing regions three, four, and five, but the rest of them, AmeriHealth, Blue Cross, United Healthcare and WellCare, they're going to be managing the entire state, okay? So there's going to be overlaps of covered insurance companies, all right? Next slide. So the enrollment process is coming up, so there's going to be mandatory enrollment of Medicaid beneficiaries, and just to give you a number, those in our budget today, and the number of people that we serve today, about 70 to 80% of those individuals are low-to-moderate risk. So the reason why I wanted to go in detail in this presentation, July 1, those individuals will no longer be served by Trillium. We currently have been serving them for years and years and years. They will no longer be served by Trillium. They will be served by those insurance companies, okay?
So to make sure I understand you, the low-to-moderate individuals will move from y'all to the insurance plans...
Yes.
...come 1 July.
Correct.
And y'all will retain your high risk, but it will be mental, behavioral, and physical.
Well, so there's a time lapse difference. Our plan, and I'll go into detail about that, doesn't start until July 2022, but we will continue to be serving those high risks like we are today, but not necessarily the entire physical health side that you added at the end there, okay? They'll still be continuing to get that physical health like they do today until 2022.
But under, okay, well, this is real confusing.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So for that gap, that two-year gap, for the high-risk individuals, who's doing their physical health?
Who they are serving today. So whoever the insurance company that that individual is doing, so there's a fee-for-service that someone's on Medicaid, and they go to their primary care doctor, Medicaid fee-for-service will pay for that.
All right, so let's pretend I am a high-risk individual.
Yep.
1 July, you are going to be doing my mental and behavioral...
Like we do today.
Like you do today.
Yep.
Okay. And from 1 July 2020 to 1 July 2022, my old doctor...
Yes.
...is going to be doing my physical health.
Thank you, yes, exactly. Yep, okay. So...
I have a question.
Yep.
How does it affect the individual? Does it make any difference to the person that's being served?
Yes, it will, and that's one of the things that we want to make sure that people are aware of. With those five insurance companies, most of them are national companies, and they cover the entire state.
Right.
But you don't know whether your primary care doctor has all five of those insurance plans with Medicaid. plans with Medicaid. And so, for every individual, we encourage them to go to their primary care doctor and say, you know, "Do you have," and I don't want to preface which one, any one of those five, and say, "Do you have that insurance coverage? Oh, good, I get to stay with you as a primary care doctor."
Now, is there anyone to coach or to train these individuals? Because we're having some problem understanding it.
Yep.
If people receiving service are going to have difficulties as well.
Yeah, there's two parts to that. The state is setting up enrollment brokers, okay, so that they can help an individual. They can't tell the individual, "Oh, you need to go to this plan because it's better for you." But they can give them all five plans and help them choose for themselves. And then, there's an embudsmen program that if the individual isn't liking their plan, they can also get support from the embudsmen program. So, there's, the state is setting those up, and I'll go into the timeframe of those, too. Okay? So, we're encouraging folks to contact their doctor's office and ask which plans they're covered by. Next slide, please. So, for the standard plan, this is what you were getting at, all right? March 15, there will be an open enrollment for individuals that are low-to-moderate-risk Medicaid to choose one of those five plans. Okay? That ends May 14, so they have two months to choose. If they don't choose, then there's going to be an auto-enrollment process. So, let's just say Dave decides, Dave doesn't know and doesn't choose, then I may get auto-assigned to Blue Cross. And then, Patient B may get signed to AmeriHealth. Patient C get assigned, so they'll do an auto-enrollment in that process. Okay? And that auto-enrollment starts May 15. The standard plans, those five insurance companies, are continually, and we've talked with quite a few, of our current providers that we have contracts with, because we have about 500 providers that we contract to do mental health services. The standard plans are continuing to work to contract with all of those folks. Okay? Next slide, please. All right, next slide. Yes. So, our timeframe for us, okay, I just talked about standard plans. Now, we, as an LME MCO, Local Management Entity Managed Care Organization, here's our timeline. The difference was, ours was an RFA, okay? Not an RFP, a request for application. That was posted on 11/13. On February 2, we delivered, actually, we did it on February 1, just to save one day, which was a Monday, we delivered 20 boxes of our application to the state. Okay? Thousands and thousands of pages. Just to tell you how concerned we were for making sure it was going to get there, was, I was the backup driver if that person had a flat tire coming in from Greenville to bring it into Raleigh. And so, we wanted to make sure it got there, and it did. So, it was put in on February 1, but they were due February 2. The state is going to decide on June 11 which contracts are going to be awarded. Currently, today, there are seven of us, seven Trilliums across the state, okay? In legislation, they said they can pick five, they can pick six, or they can pick seven. If they pick seven, we keep the same 26 counties that we currently have today for overseeing all the mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse services. If they choose six, then those are what they're calling empty counties, and those counties will need to get divided up amongst the other six managed care organizations. All right? I will say, we're one of the best managed care organizations in the state. I am not afraid of not getting it at all. All right? With that being said, the legislation does give that leeway, though. And I will say, during the standard plan process, there was a very large national insurance company that did not get approved, and that had applied to become a standard plan. So, they're making sure that they're taking a close look at these applications. In the winter, they're going to do a readiness review of the tailored plans, and then, July 2022, we implement the tailored plan. Next slide, please. This is the current map today of the seven regions. Okay? And you'll see, we have the most counties, we have 26 counties. And so, we're very familiar with how to manage multiple counties and doing presentations like this in all 26 of our counties. Next slide, please. So, I'm going to hit on, you know, tailored plans being managed by LME MCOs. We will be managing the most severe behavioral health, substance use, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. We'll also be integrating behavioral health with physical health and pharmacy benefits, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Tailored plan care management is going to be part of us, and social determinants of health. All right? Next slide, please. So, with this RFA that the state did, it is for four years. If we get awarded it in June, and we start it July 2022, it's good for four years after that. All right? And only the LME MCOs can apply for that this time. And so, all seven managed care organizations that I was talking about did apply, all right? So, only us could apply. I will say, in legislation, in 2026, it opens up. And what I mean by that, we may not be the only ones applying for it. It could be that we could be included with insurance companies to apply to manage these individuals. Okay? And that's a new application coming out in 2025 and 2026. Next slide, please. We want to make sure that we're providing community-based care, which we think is really crucial, and you all know a lot of the providers that we have here in Craven County. We're going to be managing the whole person, including the physical health, the BH, which is behavioral health, the intellectual and developmental disabilities, the TBI, which is traumatic brain injury, the long-term services and supports, LTSS, okay? Along with the pharmacy and unmet-related needs. Next slide, please. This hits on the social determinants of health. We want to make sure that we're addressing the five biggest that are common out there: transportation, housing, food, employment, and personal safety. And we all know, if those aren't met, our costs of both physical and behavioral health go up. So, we're working on trying to develop those. Next slide, please. So, currently today, we have one call center. Well, we're going to have to extend, expand our call centers. In our contract with the state, if we become a tailored plan, and we will, we will have to have a pharmacy call center. We have about 2,100 pharmacies in our 26 counties. So, we're going to have to have a separate call center for just the pharmacies. Okay? We're going to have to have a provider call center. And so, when we talk about providers, right now, we have 500, and we manage that fine. But if we're now talking about having physical health providers, like yours and my primary care doctors that serve Medicaid, our call center is going to expand enormously for providers. We're going to have a nurse line, because we now need to make sure that we're handling all the physical side of that house. And then, what we have today is our current call center. Next slide. So, this department did establish criteria, and it's a very comprehensive and thorough criteria. I will say, we were able to look at the applications that all those five private insurance companies submitted, and theirs ranged between 4,000 to 6,000 pages, their application. Ours was very, very close to that. Okay? Because that's what the state had asked for. I'll just say, the RFA that came to us from the state was 1,008 pages. Okay? And we had to respond to that. They'll be evaluating that, and they'll take a close look at our qualifications. And if you take a look at who our executive team is, our CEO used to be the State Director of the Division of Mental Health, Developmental Disabilities, and Substance Abuse. So, there's a lot of years of experience within our executive team. Next slide, please. So, what stays the same? So, eligibility rules will stay the same for services. We'll say, you know, we have to make sure that they meet medical necessity from a clinician. Our services that we currently do today will stay the same. The difference that might come about this is, right now, I'll give one example, for someone that just needs basic outpatient therapy once a month, we do 24 unauthorized visits. So, you don't have to call us to say, "Dave needs some outpatient therapy." They can just go ahead and do that and bill it, because it's a fairly cheap service in the sense of cost. The insurance companies, we hope, will model after that, but they may do a different, instead of 24, they may do 20 visits unauthorized, that type of thing. If there are any right now, the co-pays should stay the same. And our local DSSs are still responsible, responsible for reporting any changes in their enrollment to receive Medicaid, and they're very aware of that. Okay? Next slide. On the state website, they have these six bullets that you can go into. You can find how to choose your plan, benefits and services, finding a provider, compare the plans, tip sheets. You can enroll, like I talked about, March 15, in a variety of ways. So, they're trying to make that as open as possible. Next slide. Some of the things that you may hear about, and this is, I wanted to make sure that folks were aware of this. Right now, we have providers that are in your schools doing behavioral health therapy for kids. Okay? We pay them. Most of those kids who are just getting outpatient therapy may be moving over to the standard plan and not covered by Trillium. All right? So, hopefully, with that conversation, the schools can have that conversation with the insurance companies and allow, hopefully, the same providers to come in and do school-based therapy. Okay? Mobile crisis management. There's a state rate for that, but as you all know better than anybody, the 26 counties that we cover are very, very, very rural. So, we have to pay a higher rate than someone that does mobile crisis in Raleigh, because they may travel 10 minutes to their mobile crisis when our folks have to travel an hour. All right? Our call centers are going to be changing, like I showed in the previous slide, and provider contracts are going to expand enormously. Next slide. So, this is the slide that I usually do every year with y'all, just giving Craven County specific information. And so, last year, we served 4,588 individuals. 3,402 of them were mental health, 1,004 were substance use, and 469 were intellectual and developmental disabilities. And those numbers will never add up, because a lot of those individuals have duly diagnosis. Next slide. These are those links I was referring to. If you're interested in those on the state website, please take a look at those. And last slide is just any additional questions.
All right, questions from the board. Mr. Liner, you want to...
Yes, sir. Dave, I want to thank you. I mean, everybody understands how clear this is. As clear as that sun is out there shining right now, this morning. Dave went over very briefly and everything else. I mean, there's a lot more to it. I mean, as far as our part, cards is going to be a big issue. Cards is going to take a heavy hit on this if they don't, are unable to contract with the providers. You know what they tried to do to us last year when we were moving in? If you remember, on the board last year, this was already approved last year, then the state pulled the budget. We already had people signed up
Yes, yes.
Into the system. State pulled it all out. That's confusing to the people, because we're trying to get the word out to them. They signed up, but now they're not signed up, so they got to sign up again. Pharmacy is something completely new to Dave and his group that they're trying to get, coming aboard. I mean, all of us has been out there in the system. Most of the providers in this area have cut off Medicaid. It's taken so long to get paid for Medicaid and to get their money. You've got a number of providers out there, quite a few, that's no longer taking Medicaid patients. And that's scary, and it's the same way I feel it's going to be, and Dave and I have had this conversation, as pharmacy. This is all new to Dave and his group, as far as having to provide the pharmacy service for all of these people and everything else. So, I felt that this board needs to be aware of what's coming down, because this is going, you're going to start getting phone calls this summer when this starts taking effect at places and everything in there. Because I think a lot of our people, and DSS is on top of this and on board and knows what's going on.
Yep.
But this is changing. I mean, hell, it's changed four times, I know, since last year, in going through. So, Dave, I appreciate you coming down and spending the time, but...
You're welcome.
Dave's available for anybody that wants to talk
Yes.
With him, but I think it's critical for our people so we're not left behind. Like David said, we're rural, and the 5,000 people out here, and I don't want to sound negative or anything else, need the help and not going to know what they need.
And on your point, Commissioner, I, anybody can give me a call, because I can go into a lot more detail. And this was a broad overview, but I'd be happy to meet with you individually or as a group, so...
Vice Chair Booker.
Two things. Number one, I assume this is all being driven by the state
Yes.
Department of Social Services. They're the ones...
The Department of Health and Human Services.
Health and Human Services.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Yep.
So, they're the ones that are the architects in saying, "We're going to change everything, and this is where we're going."
Yes, and, yes.
Okay. The second was just more of a curiosity. Six or eight slides back, you showed us a slide that showed the five critical things that people need. And my, transportation, housing, food, employment, personal safety, I assume that's not in any order of importance.
No.
Transportation would not be number one.
Right, right.
Would be food and housing, I would think, would be one and two. I just, it just struck me, why?
No, that was not in any order, correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
Both of our lady commissioners wanted to go. Commissioner, which one, you want to go first?
Vice Chairman Booker spoke to part of what I, question I was going to ask. And the other part was, now, it's driven by the state, where are the monies coming from?
So, the Medicaid dollars are federal dollars, okay? And that's the largest part of our budget. It's about 85% of our budget. So, like I said, when the individuals that are receiving low-to-moderate services, a part of our current budget today is going to move to those five insurance companies. part of our current budget today is going to move to those five insurance companies.
Now, you also mentioned that the school was part of it. You have people that you have in the school.
We have provider agencies that do school-based therapy, yes. Yes.
Dr. Doyle's well aware of this, and she's been using, well, you know, Miss P.
Well, can I just ask for Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, sir, you go.
That was one thing I wanted to ask. Now that you're going to five, or multiple providers, I mean, are they going to take and have, if a child, one's got insurance with this company, another's got insurance with this company, I mean, are they going to have multiple agencies coming into the school to do one-on-one, or...
Well, we hope not. What we are thinking is that that individual agency is being covered by all five of those insurance companies, so that then you don't have to have five different companies coming into the school, or throughout your community even, you know?
Thank you for that explanation. All right, Commissioner Mitchell?
Two questions, and thank you. One, I want to confirm, is it DSS who is responsible for letting the individuals who fall under the low, medium, high-risk plans know about this system? Who is responsible for getting the information to the people who are going to be impacted by this very complicated system?
Yeah. First and foremost, it's the state, okay, the state, DHHS, and then we, as ARMS, will try to make sure that we're getting out as much information as possible, like having meetings like this. And we've been doing this on our website and in public forums for about a year now.
Okay. And my second question is, this complicated system, people who need it the most are going to have the most trouble navigating it. So I'm going to establish a category I will call "People Falling Through the Cracks." What are you going to do? What is someone going to do about the people who fall through the cracks? Okay? I understand the auto-enrollment, but then there's also the, "Well, I didn't know I was supposed to do this, and I need to see a doctor, a therapist, a primary care, now." What do you do about those people?
Yeah, and that's a really good question. And I have heard the Assistant Secretary at the state answer that directly, as if, when that switch comes on July 1, nobody should be denied services. And I think he gave a timeframe, okay? So that if there was potentially a mishap in whether they're under standard plan or tailored plan, then they would still be covered and be able to see their doctor or physician or whoever.
So to make sure I understand what you're saying, during this bubble of time, let's say three months, while everything gets sorted out, you go on and see your doctor, Mr. or Mrs. Smith, and we'll sort out the issue meanwhile.
That's what we're hearing, yes, yes.
Okay, but we don't know, that's what we hear, but we haven't seen it in action.
Well, right, because we won't see it in action until July 1. But currently, like today, those low-to-moderate risk individuals are covered by us. We get the funding for that today. July 1, those five insurance companies will be getting the funding to do that, all right? To start paying for those services. I would just, and on your note, I would just encourage everybody to be asking their primary care doc which insurance plans they cover.
And sign up for that one, preferably.
Yeah, if you want to stay with your primary care one, yes, yes. Well, no, I shouldn't say that. I don't want to do any advising.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions? All right, staff have anything? All right, Mr. Peterson, thank you for taking your time to come to...
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Appreciate your leadership and what you do.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
All right, next on our agenda is the Health Department. Mr. Scott Harrelson, good morning, sir.
Good morning.
If you're doing well today.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Scott, if you will, this morning, we have two items that we are to vote on, but also, if you will, take a little time and give us update, you know, after you finish on our current status of COVID here in Craven County.
Yes, sir, I would be glad to. The two items we have today are funding for the COVID effort. The first is emergency preparedness, and the second is communicable disease. But to us, it's a little more seamless than that, because it's all going towards the same efforts. And the first pot of money is $46,617. And the efforts that are going on now, it's really all facets, because we have testing. We were doing, we had two days of testing at one time, drive-through at the Health Department, then we dropped to one day. And then we had, now we have an outside source that was a subcontractor with the state that's doing testing at Without Limits Christians. Pastor Pat was, we were able to work with them, because they have an overhang over there. And now, from about 10:00 to 2:00 every Monday of the month, for the next, for February, March, they're hosting that for us, which is a big help. And in addition to that, we have a call center that's five days a week. We have the Convention Center Mass Clinic, which is four days a week. And beginning this week, they're getting busier and busier, because we have higher second-dose numbers coming in on us, and we have 700 first doses every week as well. In addition to this, our communicable disease staff is working outbreak clusters. We had five go on this past week. They're working five outbreak clusters at one time. And then there's the testing that we still provide through our clinic set up there, and we're working with CCHC and Carolina East as well. And we'll be submitting an application for a special event to try to get more vaccine into the community, doing outreach efforts, trying to get people who otherwise have problems of navigating the system, trying to get in and get appointments. So a lot of COVID activity going on right now. And as I said, we're hiring additional staff. We have contract staff that we've hired. We've got staff that have been repurposed from the state. We have staff from other county departments coming and helping us in the call center. We have, it's difficult to find nurses, so we're working with emergency management, with Mr. Stanley and Ira, and Ira was able to reach out to some local paramedics, and they're really good assistants at the Convention Center, giving the shots. So we have one, I think we've got a second one coming onboard, ECU School of Nursing. They need hours, so we're getting student nurses to come over and give shots as well during the clinic. So great resources there. And also, just supplies, it's hard to find gloves. Sometimes we get inch-and-a-half needles, we'd rather use one-inch needles, we're trying to find those for the mass clinics. Just supplies, people, and hopefully, more vaccines soon. The state tells us that there'll be about 16% more coming in the short run. And now, we've also got some of the private pharmacies that are offering the shot. We're not competing with them for stock. I think what they had was some that was not used in the long-term care center, rest home So the first pot of money is $46,617.
All right, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Any discussion from the board? Here, Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next pot of money, for all of the things I spoke to earlier, $96,609. A lot of this is going, in addition to the contract staff, a lot of our staff are tasked with all of these efforts as well. So we have a lot of staff that are doing COVID most of the time and trying to keep up with their regular job as well. For instance, we had a UDS report that's required by the federal qualified health center every year, and it's due today. And all last week, we were running audits, trying to get these things in order to submit them, be able to submit them by today. So, yeah, and the staff is doing an excellent job. We've gotten a whole lot of compliments from the community, and I'm very grateful that the hospital and CCHC, and even Goshen Medical Center, their satellite, has been transferring doses as well. So the county, very supportive, the folks down at the Convention Center, doing a great job, all coming together. And these are our first two pots of money for vaccine administration, really. So there's more to come, and I think that'll be coming from the feds to the state and dispersed to each county.
All right, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? This is for $96,609. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. In addition to what we've already talked about this morning, the COVID cases are coming down across the state. At one point in time, the seven-day average transmission per 100,000 people in the state was over 90, and now it's in the 30s. So it's about a third of what it once was. The state peak was somewhere around January 4. And very similar here in Craven, as the state goes, we sort of go as well, so our cases are coming down. The last report I got from the communicable disease folks, Kathy Fisher at Craven, or at Carolina East, was that we had 23 Craven residents in the hospital here. That has been higher, still more than we want to see. And I think that our local rate is, we're in the 40s as far as transmission here. Some counties around us are in the 60s, some are lower. But you're beginning to see some dip below 20 in certain areas of the state, and that literally happens overnight, their rates start to fall. So the hospitalizations in the eastern region have also fallen. At one time, they were over 500, 550, just for our region of the state, and now we're probably about 350, as far as a region of the state, this northeast region. And the vaccine efforts, we've got a lot of capacity, really want to try to get more to our partners in the weeks to come, if at all possible.
All right, questions from the board?
I've got one question. I like, thank Scott and his staff for doing wonderful work. I did get my second shot, and I had no effector behind it.
Okay.
None whatsoever, a little soreness, but it ran away a couple of days. And I also went to have my COVID-19 tested with my nose and all. And I did it Thursday, Saturday, I got my results back. So it was negative. I want to thank you, your staff, for what good work that you guys are doing. And one more thing, after the meeting, after you finish, could you hang around for a minute? Or the county manager and I want to speak to you for a minute?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Let's open the chair. Commissioner Smith?
My question has nothing to do with what you just spoke to. However, in the meeting that I attended earlier last week, there was the pastor that had hundreds of thousands of dollars, is there coordination there? I think he said he had like $300,000 grant.
$500,000.
$500,000 grant. And I was trying to, to see how... He mentioned giving tests. That was a lot of money, in my view, to give, just to be given the test. And I'm wondering, is he working with you in any way? I was trying to get a handle on what's happening there, and I know, maybe that was my place to do that, but I'm trying to get some understanding of how that is working to help folk in Craven County, how it's working with the whole general scheme of things.
Yeah, and the meeting that we had with early, or last week, that was the first that I'd heard as well.
I thought everybody kind of knew about it but me, because that was...
Not me either, but I know that they do have some transportation funds, you mentioned, for people who might want, who might need transportation. And I do know that, like this past weekend, Carolina East had a large event, I believe, on Sunday at Day Spring Church. They vaccinated a lot of...
He worked with that.
I don't know if he was coordinated with that effort or not, but I do know that they're reaching out, and they have some point people at the hospital that are working with that. So as far as tapping into the resources or the grants for that church, there hasn't been a whole lot of coordination between us and them as of yet.
All right, other questions? Commissioner Mitchell?
Could you, the questions that I get, the phone calls that I get from people in my district are almost entirely about vaccine supplies that are coming into the county this week, next week, three weeks out. And you didn't get a whole lot of detail into that. And I understand that is a moving target, but if, could you, you know, the second-shot people, I think, are covered, but it's the first-shot people who are the most concerned. Could you talk to us about what you're looking at the next one, two, four weeks out, as much as you can?
Yes, ma'am.
What's going to be coming into the county?
We are on the third week of a three-week baseline right now. So I'm hoping that this week, we'll find out what we're getting for the next three weeks.
I hope.
We hope. So what we have coming in is 500 baseline doses to the Health Department, and then another 200 equity doses. And the equity doses are for low-income, 65 and older population. So they reran our statistics for Craven County and ascertained that we had some, a little higher-than-average population of 65 and older that was low-income, so they said, we're going to give you an extra 200 doses to go towards that effort. Now, the hospital, they're getting 400 first doses. So those doses I just mentioned, the 700 coming to us are first doses. Hospital's getting 400 first doses as well. And then we're getting all the second doses. So for instance, I believe this week, we get 900 second doses, and I think the hospital probably got 1,950 second doses. So the body of work is ramping up, and we're hoping that we can get more first doses in our baseline allotments, but also, the only other avenue you really have is to say you're having a special event to try to get, and that's not recurring, really. What's happening on those is you submit for a special event, they may give you a one-shot deal of, and they want you to at least do 500 or more. So, and we're going to try to do a collaborative between Carolina East, CCHC, and us, to try to do a request for maybe an additional 3,000, and see if they'll give us any of that.
Okay, and the, I'm reading on the news that, you know, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart pharmacies are at least in the chain somewhere in some states. Are any of our local pharmacies going to get any of those doses in the next few weeks?
Yes, ma'am. I believe actually, this past Saturday, Walgreens had some.
Walgreens did Saturday and Sunday.
Yes, it did. And Rilo has also applied to be a vaccine provider as well. And the vaccines, the reason that, in my understanding, the reason that, like, the CVSs and the Walgreens got it early was because they were the ones that had the federal contracts to do the rest homes and long-term care. And evidently, you know, people declined it. Some of, maybe some of the people who worked in the rest homes did, you know, declined. So they had this vaccine available, and they said, well, if we're not going to use it here, we're just going to move it over to our retail centers and give it to the general public.
But that's part of my question. It's one thing, you know, we've got a supply here that didn't get used, we're going to move it over to Walgreens and y'all use it. That's different from, let's say, the federal government saying, every week, Walgreens gets $2,000, so every week, Walgreens is going to be doing them on Saturday or Sunday. And I think what you're telling... And I think what you're telling me is that's not happening yet.
Not that I'm aware of. I think what they're doing right now is clearing shelves from, from stock that they had on hand.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And that's another issue we've heard with these so-called federal site setups across the country. I think that's another Robin Peter to pay Paul situation. So some of them are being declined now because it's, there's no more, it's not like extra vaccine they're bringing with them.
Right.
I think they would just, and what's happened across the state, not just here in Craven County, is that the capacity and the infrastructure has ramped up. It's in place, if we could just get more vaccine. But we're further along the line than, than you, than it feels like to me. For instance, if you've got 21,000 18-year and old, and younger, excuse me, less than 18 years of age in, in Craven County. Now, the Moderna product does not even recommend it, I believe, for 16 and under. So we are right now, right at 16,000 doses given, close to 12,000 first doses, okay? So if you've got roughly 80,000 people, once you back out your 18 and under initially, they may get it later on, but you back them out right now, and then you say 60% of those 80,000 people want it, you're about 48,000 people, but you're at 12,000 first doses already. So in my mind, we may be, you know, a fourth of the way there as far as getting the shots out to the people who actually want a shot. Now, I do believe the 65 and older population will, you're seeing higher than 60% of them want it. But once you get past that population, we'll see. That's just an estimate based on some pretty good data that a lot of the places that have been offered it so far are really about 50/50.
Commissioner Liner?
Yeah, Scott, you talked about the hospital 400. Now, are they splitting that with CCHC, or CCHC getting 400 as well?
No, they're splitting that.
So they're only actually getting 200 each then?
They split it up, like, I think the, the big event that they had at the church, I don't know how many they used for that, it could have been like 300 for that. So it's not assured that it's a 200/200 split, I think, every week. I think it's just basically what's going on that particular week.
So whatever number comes out of the hospital, that's, that's also CCHC's share in that?
Yes, they usually slide some doses over to CCHC. Which, and you can understand, they've got a great mechanism too, both of them do, for getting vaccine out. They could do a lot more. And that's, so it's turned to a situation where between second doses and first doses, on our Tuesday through Friday clinic we're doing at the convention center, we're pretty, pretty busy with that. Because, you know, we're getting around 400 doses a day now. That's a, that's a lot of people to move through down there in a day. But they, they could definitely use some more if we could get it to them.
Well, I gotta say one thing, you gotta be doing something right. We've got 2,700 doses we've given out to other counties, so people have come down here to get their shots. I mean, it's no fault of yours. I mean, we're, we're good.
Now, 27, I'd seen about 700.
I seen in the paper and on the news, they said 2,700.
Okay, we ran a report, and I think we had 700, just shy, about 697.
Still, I mean, you get that many people coming from Raleigh and...
Well, you had Carteret, Jones, Pamlico, and Nor Pitt. Yes, sir.
Vice Chair Booker?
Scott, a couple of things. Number one, I want to, being on your board, I just want to make sure everybody understands the, the magnitude of what this board is going through, not this board, but this department, to do their normal work and yet add on all the work that's being done. The number of people taking calls, the people doing the call contacting, contacting. So they're putting in a lot of hours, and Scott, and mostly not Scott, mostly his people, are just doing a great job. And I just want to make sure that he and his people get credit for that. So thanks again, Scott, for that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, added to his workload, our governor, in his wisdom, decided to announce last week that now teachers are eligible. We are nowhere near taking care of our senior citizens who should get the priority, who are in a higher priority group. Now, he's going to start getting phone calls and people going online from the teachers' group. Whether we give them a shot or make them wait is, is his call, as I understand that, right? You have, you have the option of continuing to go to the higher groups first before you go to the, the next lower group?
Yeah, what the, effectively, what was done with that last order from the governor's office was, they moved teachers and daycare workers to the front of the line for Group Three.
Right.
And, and we've had a lot of seniors say, hey, well, you know, what, what's going to happen? So, yeah, there's, there's an opportunity in there, you know, I think the, the date was February 24th, and then on March the 10th, the rest of the essential workers. But it, it comes back to that lack of vaccine. I'm a total agreement, I'd love to see all of the essential workers and the school workers and, you know, get it. But what's going to happen now is that they, this, yeah, you're right, the 65 and older are still Group Two. So they're still prioritized above. And while we've worked out with Dr. Doyle and the public schools here, Amy Heflin, I think it's a really good plan where they will, they're, they're going to have a portal, a registration portal set up to enroll in CVMS. The state's doing that for every school system. And I think they'll probably parlay over to large employers later on as well. But they get in there and register, and then we give them vaccine, and then their nurses go and vaccinate under our supervision. So they'll actually be taking it to the schools when, when we can get to that point.
That's good. I, I just found it frustrating that the governor has to be, I don't know if it's political or what, that he had to make that announcement when the vaccine's not available at this point to take care of that group. Why are we making this announcement? But it could be political, I don't know, what, what his thinking was, or his, his health director, what her thinking was. Bottom line is, it just adds more people who think they're going to get moved up when there's not vaccine there today to take care of them.
Yes, sir. That's correct. You know, we're getting 1,100 first doses into the county. And that may change. We may get some new information where we're getting more, I hope we do. But, yeah, there's, there's not like a bolus or a special cache of vaccine mint for school employees right now.
And, and we're still getting calls and emails from seniors saying, I can't get in, what do I do? Frustration.
Yeah, highly frustrated.
That's still going on.
That's what, three out of the, on Monday and Tuesday mornings, usually, we, we make people happy in the call center. The rest of the week, they're not so happy because everybody after the appointments are gone. And people ask us about a wait list. We do not keep a wait list because we not feel it's practical to have thousands of people on a wait list. Because what's occurring is people, our people, like, we have people coming in from outside, our people are going to other counties as well.
Yeah.
They're trying to go anywhere they can to get the shot initially. Once you have wait lists, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work to give calls back and, and the phone not be answered because people think it's a solicitation call. People are calling back in, wanting to know where they're at on the list, thousands of people on a list. It, I think that the way we're doing it, the people are going to be frustrated any, any way you slice it, because there's not enough vaccine right now. But it's very efficient, and once they do get in, it's, it's a pretty smooth process.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, part of what I wanted to speak to has been addressed already. Again, I have, I'm in the process, as you know, of trying to register people to get, take the vaccine.
Yes, ma'am.
And I am learning that some of our seniors who could not get into Craven County, went to Jones County or to Pitt County, so that is happening. The other question that I have is the question that they're asking me, is which vaccine is available this time? They want to know whether it's the Pfizer or the Moderna. Do you...
It's the Moderna.
It's Moderna?
Yeah, us and Carolina East are both getting Moderna. For whatever reason, that's, that's what the state's been able to, to get here in the last few weeks. If we're getting any Pfizer, it would be like a second dose Pfizer.
Okay.
But we're not getting, as far as first doses, it's all pretty much Moderna now.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Not, Scott, we thank you again, appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you for all your support, we pretty much appreciate it.
All right, next we have the Coastal Regional Airport presentations we have with us this morning, Mr. Andy Shorter and the chairman of the Airport Authority, Mr. Jerry Leahy. Good morning, gentlemen. And Mr. Kusman, the attorney, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all for waiting this morning, sorry it's been a long...
No, that's quite all right, sir. Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you. Hope everyone had a nice, wet weekend. Tough act to follow on that last one, but I'll try to do my best, and I appreciate your time this morning. The first thing I'm going to start off with is a brief about the Small Community Air Service Development Grant Program, or Program Grant. It's a tongue-twister of a acronym, but like all good federal programs, it has one, and so we call it the SCADZI. Next slide. First, however, I want to start off with updating our economic impact numbers. So the state in January released a new report based on 2019 numbers, so these were pre-COVID numbers. And you'll see that I superimposed them onto what our 2017 numbers were, so you can kind of roughly do the percentages in your mind. But it's about a 25% increase. So the Bigfoot stomping number there is Coastal Carolina Regional Airport has about a half a billion-dollar annual economic impact. So that's direct, indirect, and induced. And below that, you can see how the jobs and then the tax revenue and the personal income break out. So almost $100 million in personal income and up to $16.6 million in state and local taxes that are incurred through the activity of the airport. So that's a pretty good number. The state overall has gone up to $61 billion for all 72 airports in the state, and that's about 10% of the state's GDP. So again, we like to use the term airports mean business, and this is a good indicator of, of how that's true. So with that, next slide. These are the five bullets of the program. There you can see the SCADZI acronym, and the Small Community Air Service Development Program is the name of it. I'll talk about the grant uses, the program funding, the elements of a successful grant constraint. So I just want to give you the broad brush nature of what this program is. It was kind of a short fuse. We were not planning on doing it this year initially, but late last month, we were told that the FAA extended the deadline for the grant this year to March 1st, which was important enough, it's something that they normally don't do. But then the other more important factor, they more than doubled the amount of money available for this grant this year. So it was one of those situations where it was, you know, maybe riskier not to try it than it was to try it. So we, we pulled a pretty quick trigger on this, and hopefully, actually, maybe some of you have heard about it, you know, we just sent out a, put out a fishing line, put out an email, and, and people caught on to it. And we, just, the first weekend, we sent it out on our Friday, had a lot of support. So we were very encouraged by that. So we decided to, you know, kind of day by day evaluating how it was going and decided to keep going with it up to this point. Next slide, please. So the SCADZI grant is only, or one of two grants available to small rural communities. The other one, Essential Air Service Grant, does not apply to this community, but the SCADZI does. And we indeed had intended to do a SCADZI grant next year, which would be for 2023 service. I'd already been talking to United Airlines in the last couple of years, and they are, or had intended, and I believe they still are intending, to have Dulles turn into, for them, that Charlotte is for Americans. So to be kind of a southeast regional hub for them to do regional service. The SCADZI is an annual competitive grant process, open to communities with small airports, not larger than a small hub. Our airport is considered a non-hub. Wilmington is a small hub, Asheville is a small hub, just to give you some indication of size there. And it's to provide temporary financial assistance. So this isn't the be-all, end-all. This is what's really used to get service started at, at small airports in regional communities, or help service grow in small airports, regional communities. Next slide. And they, these are some of the statutory limitations, just for your information. Usually about a max of 40 grants each year, no more than four to the same state. Now, this will be interesting this year because they've kind of expanded the program, whether they expand that statutory clause at all. And then generally, the priorities that we'll see on another slide, but here it talks about higher-than-average fares. That is probably used less that way than it is to create additional service at locations. But it consists of a local cash contribution. It's an established public-private partnership. So like all our federal grants, there's a local match required, but this really is graded on how much public-local support you have, public-private for partnerships. And it materially benefits a broad section of the community, you know, from business down through education. And they want to make sure you can ensure the timely use of the funding. And that's really why we were targeting 2023 before, because not only do you need the grant to get the money on the one hand, you need to have someone to receive it on the other hand, and that's what they're talking about in that bullet. And we had kind of felt out, united, that, that they weren't going to be ready till 2023. However, now we know there's another carrier that's a, does network service, so it's a small regional carrier that flies the larger airlines' flags a lot of the times, but they also do some of their own work. It's called at-risk, because that's what it is. It's not tied to any large carrier initially. But they are interested right now. So we do have someone that's receptive on the other side of this as well. Next slide. So these are the five bullets of the common uses. Air carrier revenue guarantees, so that's basically what we're looking at. What that is, a carrier decides to come into a community, it's done the market research. Carriers won't just come willy-nilly anymore. The banks in the last 10 years have been very strict with the airlines about managing their business model, staying off the roller coaster and just having a good, steady increase for their business over any given period. So what the revenue guarantee does, it helps the airline reduce their risk of starting new service into a new location. So it goes in and says it needs to sell this many tickets at this amount of price in order for it to be profitable. And that's what they are, they're a profit-demand organization now. You know, they've gone away from market demand, they've gone to pure profit demand. So if they are not, they come in, say, month one, and they get 50% of what they projected that they would get, well, then this grant would then backfill that other 50%. And so hopefully, it would obviously wean itself out over time. We had one of these revenue guarantees when Delta came in, in 2008, but, but it was so strong and the market research was so good that they never had to spend one dime of a revenue guarantee when Delta came in. So while this money is, is put up, oftentimes, it's not used or executed. Marketing, we can help with general route-specific. Again, airlines are very interested in that when they start a new route, they want to have a good amount of marketing out there. Aircraft upgrade would relate to upgauging of aircrafts, so larger aircraft on a similar route. Also, you can use it for research studies. Leakage study, that's what we call, somebody that lives in this area that drives one, two, three hours to another airport to use it. And studying the catchment area or any intermodal models, which really don't apply to us, that would be trains and planes kind of things. And then the offset startup costs, again, big capital costs in the airline industry, and so that would be one of them, the ground servicing equipment and things like that. Next slide. So what is it? Project funding, it's a reimbursable grant program like I just talked about, the community's front payment. So that is just like our other airport improvement program grants. We essentially get the bills in, we pay out the money out of our, you know, accounts receivable, out of our, our fund account, and then we apply for the federal money that pays us back for 90% of those improvement program grants. So this, we would pay ourselves back with whatever percentage the grant worked out to be, plus the, the public pledge piece of it. There's no limit to the individual grant awards. However, funding requests should be reasonable, given the totals available. And this, like I talked about before, 18 million is available this year. Last year was a little over 7 million. So again, they more than doubled the amount available this year. And then normally, grants can be given as low as 20,000 up to a million and a half or so. And I think what we're aiming at in this grant would be a million-dollar grant. Okay, so the next slide just kind of goes over those priorities again. If you work left or right, and talks about the points or, or shows you, indicates how... left or right, and talks about the points, or shows you, indicates how we work through the process. Next slide. Now, see, these are some of the secondary considerations. Again, creative solutions, including regional ideas. Some airports have used these, which wouldn't be out of the realm here, to daisy-chain an airplane. That's something that's generally not done anymore. You know, where you get on a plane, and then you land somewhere else, but you stay on the plane, and then you finally go to your hub. But it's been done successfully down in Mississippi in the last few years. And that would be one thing that we would talk to airlines about, to see if they'd be interested in this kind of very unusual situation.
And let me make sure I understand what you're saying. Let's pretend an airplane takes off from New Bern with 10 passengers, and it lands at Greenville and takes on five more passengers, and then it goes to Dulles. Is that what you mean by daisy-chain?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And actually, you know, that's something that we've already pitched to Delta to get them back here, to do something like that, where they would start here. I'd say go to Wilmington, probably fill up the rest of it, so they could up-gauge the plane one size to meet the needs of both stations. So again, these talk about the broad support, which is again, the foot stomper, and that's what the federal government wants to see. Something I didn't mention up front, this is a DOT program. It's not specifically an FAA program, but a DOT program. That's why you see some of the intermodal things, other modes they'll have, like grant processes. Next slide. So here's the successful application. No set format. We have an air service development consultant. He's done this for 20 years. He knows what this looks like. They, as a firm, are very successful of getting these grants. So we're putting together the application, of course, with their help. Description of service and needs or deficiencies, which of course, we have a great description of that now, that especially with Delta being suspended, it would be a almost in-kind restart of a similar service that we've proven that we can already have and maintain. And we actually have some good indication numbers of that northbound route as well. And that would be good for this area, because of course, PGV ourselves and OAJ have been kind of beating the same drum for a long time, Charlotte, and then with the Delta, the Atlanta service. So something going north would be well-served in this area. So that goes into the strategic plan of meeting those needs, a detailed description and necessary funding, and an explanation of how the proposed project differs from any previous grants. Well, we hadn't done one of these in, ever. So, you know, we have a clean slate here. A lot of airports get these and have them, and have them on the books, and it goes back to, you know, using the funding, and they don't have the receiver on the other side. So they do not have good track record. So I think we sit very well for that. And then designate a legal sponsor for administering the proposed project. And again, we have a good track record of doing that with airport improvement program grants. So I don't think any of that would be a hurdle for us. Next slide. Couple of the constraints. The department assesses the community is ready for, to implement. This would be more applied to a community that doesn't already have air service, but we do. We're experienced with it, more than 50 years. We've had commercial air service. And if there's some airport improvements needed. For the size of the jet we're talking about, we don't need any airport improvements. Our runway is sufficient for what they would be using for this route. And then late applications are not accepted. So again, kind of the three-alarm fire with us getting this done here in about a month's time. And then if we do have difficulties, there's a potential window to correct the application. And the grants are not awarded or announced until May, so there's a little bit of a delay in there. So finally, the last slide. And I have a full paper copy of this that I'll leave with Ms. Holton, and also the new economic impact statement, that you can look at this. But this is an excerpt. Again, we have really been hitting the ground running here. In Ittri, at NC State, they work with the state DOT a lot and do a lot of research things. So they've already done a report on the economic impact of this route with two flights a day, 365 days a year. You can see up there, that's another $21.9 million a year economic impact. So likewise, if you think of our two Delta flights a year, or a day for a year, that's probably a loss right now of what we don't have without Delta being here. We have seen some indications recently. Just last week, we got some data that, in my mind, if I were to speculate, I would say that Delta's probably close to, or has already made the decision to eliminate EWM from their route structure. So they haven't told us yet. The answer to us is still, we don't know. And as far as network planning, they're not talking to us. So once again, a new service coming right in on the heels of that, I think would do very well. And we have the proven data to show that that northeast area is a hot area for us. We've already briefed that to American. Of course, we sent it on a brief to Delta. But we have very good data and very good assessment of what that would do for this area, reflected in these impact numbers.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, then the next item would be the airport acquisition.
Yes, sir. I think if you look in your packets, 5, 5A, something like that, you'll see the diagrams there. The church property, this is a little bit of an add-on. We talked about the two residential properties a couple of months, or maybe a month, six weeks ago. This one, we took a pause on it. We had some more internal discussions about it, because it's kind of a twofold. While we would normally, or we will, consider it to be an anti-encroachment issue, certainly along the front area of the airport, it's going to be non-air nautical. You can't get airplanes or taxiways out where we're talking about. But the encroachment would be, as they continue the construction on I-42 and displaced businesses, we believe that some of those businesses are going to try to relocate. So what we're trying to be protective of is our property out front, that we don't get blocked in somehow by some business that, you know, would not be a good partner with the airport. So the Generation Baptist Church, a few years ago, they came to us and asked about maybe buying the property, and it was not right at that time. So since then, we've gone back to them, and they're interested in this back. It's Charles 1.28.
1.28.
1.28 acres, undeveloped on their church property that's adjacent to current airport property that here, and then here's the next piece of it, property that we are considering as potential non-air nautical commercial use. So we've had a meeting with the manager and the county attorney, and then since then with our two commissioners that are members of the Airport Authority. And so we're talking through that. We're still five or six steps away from understanding, you know, using it for commercial purposes within the airport, what we call the airport city, things that you normally see around an airport. Gas stations, convenience stores, quick-service restaurants, and up to and including, you know, hotels are some of the things that you see. And these are, those first two categories are things that are being displaced off the Highway 42, you know, right-of-way land grab that's going on right now. And ultimately, the gas station's very important to the airport because of the rental car service. We have six rental car companies that obviously use those gas stations, certainly daily. Anyway, so the proposition here is to go ahead and purchase that land. It's been evaluated $167,000. We're still, have yet to do a environmental due diligence study on it, but everything looks set to go. When we were having a discussion with the county manager and the attorney, you know, it did come up, well, how about the whole property again? So we've gone back to the pastor, and he's, they're thinking about it. So they want to go ahead and move on with this part of it, and then we're going to go and get the rest of the property appraised. He said that if it did come out good, and they agreed to it, of course, he'd like it leased back to him for at least a year, so he could find other property. I think he, in his mind, they would like to move further south, or further towards Havelock, or anyway. So anyway, it's a very cooperative engagement with the Reverend, and we appreciate his partnership. And so again, today, the proposal is to buy the 1.28 acres, which of course is FAA reimbursable, either through the CARES Act money or the normal AIP process. So either 100% reimbursable, or worst case, 90% reimbursable.
All right, before we take a motion, do I have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question here. I've been in before, a few years ago, me and Jonathan Sampson, and he has said the owner has expressed interest in selling their property. He's the owner? Just him or is our congregation?
Well, he has a board, but he's obviously cleared it with his board or congregation, however they, his advisors.
That's, it is in writing that he cleared with the members.
Yes. I mean, the legal documents will be that whatever the church is incorporated on will be the, whoever is titled to. So it won't be an individual.
Correct. The titled owner of the property are the trustees of Generation Baptist Church. Pastor Heyman has been our contact throughout the conversation.
So everybody agree to sell the property?
Correct.
If we got to the point where there was a deed being signed, then the trustees would be the ones signing the deed.
All right, Mr. Chair. Any other questions?
I want to make sure I understand. We're talking about buying this parcel right now with reimbursable funds, or with funds that will be reimbursed to us. But we may buy a second piece?
Correct. We are going, moving forward with the appraisal of that second piece of it.
So right now, we're going to buy part one, and we may end up buying part two.
Correct.
Depending on what the church wants to do, and we want to do, and whatever. So, okay, got it.
All right, any other questions? Here none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passed.
Right, thank you.
I got a question here. Yes, sir, Vice Chair.
You can go first.
Do what? Go ahead.
A year ago, before we were hit by the pandemic, we had Delta and American flying in flights a day, in and out, roughly, I don't know, whatever. What's the number today as far as passenger count compared to what it was a year ago with those 10 flights versus whatever we're getting today? How big of a drop-off? I know we had a big drop-off.
Yes, sir.
Where are we right now?
So, started at the end with that. So calendar year 2020 ended up at a 38% recovery. So, you know, 62%, is that right? Math in public, drop for the average of 2020. So that's all the way down with that, you know, 96% drop and then back up. Right now, today, we are at about a 48% recovery. So just below 50% for the last couple of months, that's where we're riding. The good piece of that, you know, it's horrible to only have 48% of your business, but the good piece of that is we're about 10% ahead of the national average, which is still hovering around that 38% mark.
Thank you.
And what that equates to right now, and January and February is a slow month, really across the nation, and it's usually helped out by the business traffic, which is the biggest loss that we've had so far. And that affects our parking lot. So even though we're almost 50% of our passengers, we're less than that as far as our revenue in the parking lot, which is our biggest generator. So we're hoping, again, the summer, things opening up, that's what we're pitching to the airlines, is this is a destination. You know, Carteret had a banner year last year with rentals and things. So we've passed that to the airlines, and they're very appreciative. Both airlines have just recently announced new routes, and they're all to locations, Myrtle Beach, Key West, Daytona Beach, Traverse City, Michigan, which I didn't know that was a big thing, but apparently, that's a good place to go now. But there are all these destination places. So we're trying to, you know, kind of flip the script here a little bit, and really pitch ourselves as one of these wide-open destinations.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Sir.
You want to come forward just a minute, introduce yourself, have the opportunity to speak just a minute. Carry him right here to the podium where they can hear you. As I refer to him, I call him Roseanne's husband, so.
I am that, guilty. Joe Leahy, I've been on the Airport Board now for a little over nine years. Enjoy it immensely. My career was in airport management. So it's been fun. And I appreciate y'all's help in what we do.
We appreciate your interest.
As far as the small airport grant is concerned, I'm very bullish. As air service, I've always felt, if there's a market, there's somebody out there that'll serve it.
Got you. All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Not. Thank y'all, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here this morning.
Thank you.
Our board, we're going to cover the sheriff's items, and then we're going to take a recess. But I feel like we need to go ahead and let them come on in, so they can go about their activities for today. So. Sheriff, welcome. And I think we have with us Major David McFadden. Also, I think he may make the first presentation. Come on up for the vehicle lease. Good morning, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm appearing this morning to request the approval of a lease for a vehicle for the sheriff's office. The lease is contained in Attachment 6A. As noted, the lease was prepared by the county attorney. We have a number of reserve deputy sheriffs at the sheriff's office. Generally, they are retired officers. They are fully state-certified officers who must maintain their state certification and training. We utilize them when we can as extra personnel. We would like to use them as patrol deputies. However, due to a shortage of patrol vehicles, we have been unable to do so. We just don't have spare vehicles. One of our reserve deputies, a local businessman, many of you may know, Mr. Evie Howard, who has been a friend of law enforcement for years, has acquired a police-rated Chevrolet Tahoe, late-model Tahoe, fully equipped, and he has agreed to provide it to the sheriff's office for use. We discussed how that might be done, and agreed that a lease situation would be advantageous to the sheriff's office and to the taxpayers of Craven County. As I mentioned, Mr. Howard has been a friend of law enforcement into the county for many years. He operates a body shop here. And in the lease, you'll see, he has agreed to provide maintenance for the vehicle at no cost to the county, be responsible for its maintenance, and also indemnify the county for the use of that vehicle. Those provisions are contained in the lease. The vehicle would be used at the direction of the sheriff's office for sheriff's office's purposes only. It could only be used for law enforcement purposes. The lease also is cancelable by either party with a short written notice. Leasing vehicles for law enforcement use is actually a fairly common practice. I think New Bern Police Department leases some vehicles. Obviously, this is somewhat unique in that we're not leasing it from a corporation, we're leasing it from an individual. However, the advantage is the cost of maintaining this vehicle will not be borne by the taxpayers, will be borne by Mr. Howard. So we would ask that the commission approve the use of this vehicle through a lease, and provide an additional vehicle so that we can better utilize our reserve deputies. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions from the board?
I want to make sure I understand. The owner is responsible for maintaining the vehicle.
Those provisions are in the, contained in paragraphs in the lease.
Well, that's what I want to make sure. So it's not, this does not fall under the sheriff's vehicle maintenance program under county services, as will be provided.
That's correct. I don't have a copy of the lease in front of me.
I do, I do. But I want to clarify.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. That is absolutely the agreement. We explained that to Mr. Howard. He is, as I said, he's been a friend of law enforcement, and actually saves the county money every year through being able to be cooperative with us and assist us when he's needed. He became a reserve deputy certified law enforcement officer, but saw that he would not be able to be a patrol officer. Now, he has gone through the field training officer program, and is ready to work. So he, on his own, was willing to purchase this vehicle for our use, understanding the requirements that are placed on him and the responsibilities.
Well, I know, and I understand the indemnity purpose of it, but indemnifying the county does not mean somebody cannot sue.
Well, that's absolutely correct. And of course, as with he and any other reserve deputy, or any other deputy for that matter, the county would always be sued. But the benefit regarding this particular vehicle is that he has agreed to indemnify the county and the county and maintain an insurance policy. Uh, and I think those details, I know those details are contained in the lease.
Yes, they are. And I voiced my concerns about them earlier. Okay.
Okay. Vice Chair?
Just a, a point that my understanding is that any deputy, reserve or active deputy, is going to have access to this vehicle if needed.
That's correct.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll essentially be a spare.
Not just for him, when he wants to be a reserve deputy or when we want him to be. It'll be in our fleet as we need it.
It'll be a spare vehicle for the sheriff's office. That's correct. Used at the discretion of the sheriff.
Other questions? All right. Here none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right. Thank you, uh, Major.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
All right. Next, Sheriff.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, here today to, uh, need the Board approval for retirement slash resignation payouts. Uh, we had one gentleman, Captain Richard Smith, who served with the sheriff's office, uh, a little over 36 years. And he retired the 31st of December. Uh, he had a substantial amount of time that he had incurred over those years. Uh, the majority of it, vast majority of it was before I came into office. And there was some, um, conversation about the comp time that he carried in him not being able to take it for, uh, purposes that were, I think, put into play before I got there. Uh, the others was from two other individuals that, uh, have currently resigned as well.
Okay. Any questions for Sheriff?
Mr. Chairman, there was a corrected budget amendment. I don't know if that was referenced earlier. Um, it was emailed out to you on Friday. We had an astute county commissioner, uh, that noted an error in it, and we wanted to make sure you got the corrected one. So I have copies if anybody doesn't have one with them.
I placed one at all address.
You got one?
So the, uh, new amount that you have for total is $54,399.
Yes, sir. And what had, just to point out, to give the commissioner credit, we had included salary for the last pay period, which was already budgeted. So we needed to remove that out of the total. So it reduced the cost, uh, down.
And the, uh, Chairman, the last two on their resignations, uh, we did not owe them comp time, uh, per our policy that we had put in place. Uh, the other one, Captain Smith, we did.
If I may ask, Sheriff, um, I think we are, I mean, you've done a great job in trying to maintain that to save taxpayers' dollars. Uh, we appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Um, we've probably still got a few that are on the force, but we, we've got, that may come in the next few years of retirement or so forth. But overall, that, that figure that was, uh, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars now is trickled down and.
But we have a policy now that was put in place December 3rd, when I took office, that, uh, 80 hours is, is the cap on, on the comp time. If it exceeds that, then there has to be written authorization by a member of the command staff. And then they're required to start taking that time that they've earned, uh, by the end of the next pay period. So we've got processes in place now to address. However, when they do take this comp time, that does leave me short, whether it's on the road or an investigator, uh, in, in some cases, without parts of the county being covered. Uh, so, you know, that's something that we need to think about as well when we have people take this comp time. Can we still adequately cover the county like we need to?
All right. Any other? Yes, sir.
Has, uh, well, it has to do with this. Um, this is for the manager and the sheriff. Looking at, you know, across the board, Sheriff, I'm not putting it out there, but how are you handling our people taking leave? I mean, it's hard to believe the position that you all are in. And I know you're dedicated and everything else, but the, being out there, are you requiring people to take annual leave? I mean, they've, they've got to have a break. I can't believe the type of job y'all are doing. They're not getting some time.
I, I don't require them to take annual leave, uh, because that, that is their time that they've earned. However, I, I do require them by policy to take their comp time and holiday now. Uh, their annual leave is given to them once comp time and holiday has been expended and their balance is zero, then they can start taking their annual leave. And all we require is a two week notice and, uh, as long as we can do it and not leave the shifts short or during a major investigation, then we, we try to accommodate whenever possible. But it is, it's, it's tough.
All right. Any other questions? County Manager, you got anything?
Uh, no, sir. Um, it's unfortunate these things happen mid-year. We wish we could plan on them, but we don't know who's going to leave in July, when they leave in January.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? There's a budget amendment for $54,399. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Sheriff, you got any updates for us? Anything you want to share with us?
No, sir. Everything is, uh, uh, going really well. Um, of course, overdoses is a continual concern, you know, with this COVID outbreak. We've got overdoses, have been on the rise. Uh, it does require my folks, because now that we go to every overdose and we are working it backwards to try to figure out where the narcotics came from. Uh, we're now working a number of those cases, which we refer to as death by distribution, where we're going after the individual that sold them the narcotics that ultimately caused them to overdose or die. It's, uh, you know, it's something that we, we've got to continue to work at hard, and we're utilizing every resource. We're going at it. Um, as you probably see on the news and our, our releases, you know, we get one and, and two more pop up. So it, it's an ongoing thing. But we're just going to continue the heat, uh, to put the heat on them and make it very uncomfortable for them to operate in this area.
All right. Questions? Commissioner Liner?
Sheriff, where do your, where do your people stand at as far as the COVID shots?
Uh, I've got a number of them, I think, that still need to get the second shot. I think that's occurring either this week or next week. Um, I don't know. I would say the majority of us so far have gotten them.
Okay.
Uh, I can't speak to the exact number because, once again, I, I did not mandate them to get it. Um, I, I did let them, but I highly encouraged it.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yeah, to Sheriff, uh, this is just a comment. Um, a lot of people talking in Moncree and Hollow, that patrol in Hollow is wonderful. You guys are doing a great job down there, and I also, also like to see a little patrol in the Adam Creek area.
Yes, sir.
And for, for the Hollow community, um, patrol is, is great.
Okay.
So no matter, really had no negative about that at all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
You, you spoke to overdoses. Are you referring to people that overdosed and are they, did they die when you, uh, on your foot?
Uh, it's, uh, well, when we do a death by distribution case, yes, ma'am.
Sometimes they survive the overdose.
Sometimes they do, and in that case, we go about it as, you know, just distribution of narcotics. But when they die, we work it as a death by distribution.
You're having large numbers of people to die?
Um, no, ma'am, not a large number. Obviously, any number's too large.
Too many, I know.
But, uh, not, not a large number, but yes, a large number of overdoses. Um, of course, our people get there, we administer Narcan, uh, and start CPR, and in more cases than not, we are able to bring them back and save their lives. However, having said that, uh, we also see a lot of people abusing this as well.
Well, when you save their lives, do they go to rehab?
That, I, I would not be able to accurately comment on that.
Oh, you don't know what happened.
I think in some cases we have, because we have referred them. Uh, but I can honestly say the ones that we have gone back for the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, 10th time to bring them back.
With the same person?
Yes, ma'am. Same residents. Then they are clearly abusing, uh, the, the process. Um, and we have a, a, another set of cases that we're working on those areas as well.
So rehab is not required?
No, ma'am. We, we can't require them. We give them the, uh, the pamphlets. We give them the phone numbers. We call crisis intervention, and, uh, if they don't want to help themselves, then.
Can't do it.
I, I would ask, is the Dick Center, is there good cooperation now? You, you getting fonts?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's no questions when we bring them up there. They don't ask any questions. They take them. Um, and I, I get a lot of good feedback about, uh, once, because it's short term, uh, about how they are able to put them in the proper place, get them where they need to be for that second phase.
Good. Any other questions? Manager, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Board, let's take a five, 10 minute recess, and we'll come back. Coming back to order, Board. Thank you for allowing us to have a few minutes. Uh, at this time next on our agenda is Planning Department, a request for addition to state maintained secondary road system. Mr. Don Bumgarner, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Uh, we're here this morning to, uh, request the Board to approve Nice Drive in the Green Tree subdivision, which is approximately 617 linear feet of paved roadway in the subdivision, to be turned over to the state of North Carolina for maintenance. Uh, the resolution, once passed, will be forwarded to NC DOT for their final consideration and acceptance of the road into the state maintenance system. Uh, we're asking the Board this morning to consider approval of the standard SR2 road addition resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I, I would just comment that, um, Don, I went and looked at this when I got the call from the resident that said, hey, we, we need the state to do something with our road. And we found out it had never been turned over.
Right, correct.
10 years, 10 years old, or approximately 10 years old. It needed some repairs. Had they, did they get that done before we turned this over? How does that work? Just so I understand.
The Department of Transportation actually requires, and this has changed, you know, in the last 30 years or so, it's changed from time to time. But basically, they require a resolution from the Board before they will go out and spend the time to look at the road to say, these things need to be corrected in order for the road to be added. So that's the current policy that the DOT has. So to, to my knowledge, those repairs have not been made because they don't, the resident or the developer does not know what needs to be done in order to get the road up to those standards.
Yeah, there, there is, was, is a large pothole right in the middle of the road that needs to get fixed before I think the state's going to take it. But that, that's the process. First, we've got to request it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. The motion and a second is to add Nice Drive to the, um, road addition. Uh, you have the resolutions. All in favor, signify and say aye.
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 Oppose. Motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next would be, um, Social Services, Mr. Jeffrey Merritt, to discuss the low income energy assistance program. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, on the January 4th meeting, you asked me to bring back some more information about this program that's currently running either through the end of March, or tool funds are exhausted. So I've done that now. So, shall see the first slide. Um, just to start off, just as a reminder, next slide, please, the initial allocation. That's what we're initially allocated. We normally receive funds from Energy Block Grant, um, for our two energy programs, Low Income Energy Assistance Program and Crisis Intervention Program. So that was what our initial allocation was. Next slide, please. In January 4th, this is the amount that was added through the pandemic leap benefits that was passed through the, um, state COVID relief funding. Next slide, please. And so there you'll see what our total allocation for Craven County is, um, you know, a little under $600,000. Next slide, please. So do you remember, we discussed in January, um, something that was done differently this December versus, um, past Decembers? Um, December's a special month in the low income energy assistance program. You had to have a household member aged six years older, or you had to have someone receiving services through Division of Aging and Adult Services, which we receive a list of those individuals. And with COVID, um, there was changes made at the state to where they went back and looked at 2019 for individuals who had, um, you know, received those benefits and they were able to determine would still be eligible this upcoming December. And they went ahead and automatically deemed them eligible. They gave us a, I think, remember, I told you we had a report that we worked to make sure all the information was the same. Um, so I want to bring you those two numbers. You can actually see the differences there. We had 157 households, um, additional households in 2020 versus 2019. Um, you know, we really believe that was due to the outreach in regards to that, that online process to where they went ahead and pre-approved those individuals. Now, you know, you're going to have some households who didn't have a six-year-old living in it in 2019 versus 2020. So some of those numbers could be factors because the increase as well. But that's about a 47.8% increase between 2020 and 2019 versus the number of households we served in December, which is intended to reach those households with, um, individuals who were above the age of 60 and sure they have a proper heating source. Next slide, please. And just some spending related to that. So you will see, um, of course, with the household increase, we saw a spending increase, um, a $72,800 difference between those two years. That's about a 75% increase from 2019 versus 2020 in the amount of funds that were distributed in the month of December. Um, next slide, please. So we want to go over the number of households we served last fiscal year. Um, we gave you the total there, a little under 1,300. Um, of course, it's an eligibility based program, so everyone is not automatically approved for it. They have to meet eligibility requirements, but you'll see a vast majority of, um, individuals were, you know, just a, probably about 12 or 13% there that were denied. So a large number of households were approved, um, for that benefit, that $300, $400, $500 benefit based upon their heating source and the number and your, um, income and the number of individuals living in your home. Uh, I do have some updated information through February 10th that I was able on this slide, if you want to write it down, but trying to let you know what we're on pace for through, um, last week, and those are the latest numbers. Uh, the total that we've served now is 894. We have approved 761, 130 have been denied, and three have withdrawn their applications. And anyone can withdraw if they want to. So, um, it's very rare. But, um, and typically, January is more of our heavier months, um, where we see a large number of applications that come in. And that's due to, after that initial December, that's when the program opens up for all households. Just a little bit on what we spent last fiscal year in 1920. Now, you're going to see there's a penny here, and there's not a zero on the end. And you're probably saying, well, why, why did that happen? Well, and, and when you're giving 300, 400, $500 benefits. Well, last year, the state took what was left over in that Energy Block Grant, and they gave very small incremental amounts. I think the largest was like $17 and some cent to put on, to put on their, um, the vendors. So that's why you see that cent there. And they may do that again this year. So, um, they went through and found all those individuals that had received benefits and redistributed funds. And next slide, please. Last one. Um, this is actually through the third. By the time we had to send, um, the slide out, that was the number. I have the latest number through last week, the Friday, which was $332,300. So there's still 273 some odd thousand dollars out there, um, that is available in the program. So we still have funds available. And if individuals are interested in applying, they can call our office. We have applications in the lobby. We'll mail them a copy. They can go through EPAS, the online portal. Um, that's, the EPAS can be found on the Craven County website, um, under Department of Social Services page. So, um, this program, like I said, will continue to operate either until the funds are exhausted or until the last business day of March, where I don't have that date right in front of me, but.
All right. Questions from the Board?
I'd just like to say thanks.
Yes.
No problem.
Yes, Jeffrey, we appreciate you, uh, giving us this updated information and for all you and your staff did.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Economic Development, Mr. Jeff Wood. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Christian.
Good morning. And Jeff Wood with Economic Development, uh, asking, coming forward to the Board today, asking for authorization. Uh, this is to complete the expansion of the water and sewer project in the Craven County Industrial Park. Uh, we had a request or proposal that went out. We had seven responses. We had seven responses. The low bidder was Jimco Construction at a proposal of $352,550.90. That has been reviewed by our engineers, Withers, as well as the office and finance. And this is a continuation of the project that we've brought in front of the board several times. This is being funded through an infrastructure development fund grant as well as a Duke Energy grant.
Okay, questions?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, buddy. All right. Next is appointments. You see there the pending appointments. Do we have any nominations for any of those this morning? Here none. We have under current, we had first the Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council. You have a letter in your agenda packet asking that Ms. Sarah Scott be replaced by Mr. Chuck Strickland. And if you will notice, Mr. Strickland said this would maybe for the interim. Are there any other nominations? Here none. He will be accepted by acclamation. Next is your Fire Tax Commissioners. We'll take them by the townships first. We have Mr. Martin Hernandez from Township.
Make a motion.
All right. We have a motion. Are there any others nominations? Here none. He will be accepted by acclamation. And then you have for number nine township, Mr. Howard Carrier, Mrs. Marjorie Gonzalez, and Mr. Chris Rester. And I talked to their leadership this weekend. They would ask that I'll be reappointed, and I would ask the board to do that if you would. Any other nominations? Here none. They will be accepted also by acclamation. All right. Next is the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees. First one there is from Township Two, Little Swift Creek, Mr. Wesley Griffin. I would ask on behalf of Commissioner Mark and myself that he be reappointed. Are there any other nominations? Here none. He is accepted by acclamation. And next would be Mr. Roger Wedden from Township Nine, which is in my district, and I would also ask the board if you would to reappoint him. Are there any other nominations? Here none. He will be accepted by acclamation also. You see your upcoming appointment that we have for Mark, very important one there, Highway 70 Quarter Door Committee, Clean Sweep Committee. You have a list of Fire Tax Commissioners. I would ask if they're in your district to make sure you, if you would, please reach out to them. And then on the second page behind that, you have your Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees, and there are a number of those individuals there scattered about amongst the county also. Any other appointments for consideration this morning? Here none. Next will be the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Eric Grady. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have two items for your consideration this morning. Both relate to the sale of county-owned real estate acquired through the tax foreclosure process. Both parcels are in the same stage, which is the initial offer. If the board approves the offers this morning, we will put the offer out for the upset bid process, and you all will see it again. The first offer is on parcel number seven, 101021. This property actually does not have a street address. It's landlocked. And we've got an offer of $1,000 for this property. The past due taxes and cost of foreclosure were $2,629.05. The tax value of the property is $1,620. It's my recommendation that the board approve this offer and authorize us to proceed with the upset bid process.
All right. Commissioner Booker, are you okay? It's in your district. All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right.
The second parcel has a number of 3058097. This also does not have a street or road address, but it does have some access on a road. The offer amount is $1,700, and the taxes and the cost of the foreclosure were originally $3,204.35, and the tax value is $3,810, as with the other parcel. I recommend that the board approve the offer and authorize the upset bid process.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. I would just state, this is in the Dover area, right outside of Dover there, and I checked it out also, so. All right. Here no further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you this morning. I'll be brief because we've had a rather long meeting. As I mentioned at your last meeting, we are in the middle of our budget process now from a staff level. We've kicked that off. Departments are working on crunching their numbers, as you saw, which I'm going to talk a little bit about in a minute of the audit report we received this morning. Still some uncertainty, but, you know, last year wasn't as bad as we thought. So going in, we're going to have an open mind. As you can see how the money's spent in the county, there's lots of areas, we spend a lot of money, we have very little control. So as we go into budget process, you know, again, we're excited to be there, but we still uncertain exactly how we're going to be. I did want to just say again, for the record, you got your audit report this, this morning. I want to thank Craig and his wonderful finance team downstairs. It's a team effort, takes every single person in that department a significant amount of time, along with the contractor who you heard with, along with other departments who have to provide data. I think getting that type of report this morning is meaningful, and I think we're known in Craven County over the years for having a great finance department. I think Craig's held that tradition forward, so just say that for him. This week, I have a Dick Center meeting. It's our quarterly meeting. I was talking with Commissioner Liner. He's your new appointee from a commissioner on that board. I did receive the preliminary data. To Ms. Smith's point about, I walked out for a second, walked in and heard you talking about overdoses and things. We did see 16 folks use that facility in the month of December. Our data's a little bit behind. That's one of the higher months we've had since we've been a member, more comparable to being the second versus the third of the partners there from the number of folks that use it. As the sheriff indicated, there were several jail diversions, meaning instead of detoxing in a jail cell, these folks are able to detox in an environment that's suitable. We did have some rather surprising news right at the end of the year where the long-term director of the Dick Center is being promoted within their organization to a Raleigh office, and we'll be getting a new director here in Onslow County for our local facility. The, I guess, the light at the end of the tunnel on that is, is that she'll now, the lady who's leaving, will still oversee the facility, just in a different capacity at a higher level within RI. But I just want to say for the record, Grace has done a fantastic job over the last two years, starting from scratch, building a team and getting that facility where folks are able to use it, and many times, Ms. Smith saved their lives. That's what it's all about. Also attended a CE1A meeting last week. Lot of good things going even during a pandemic. Economic development hasn't stopped. As you can see, you're seeing Jeff Wood quite often here. He's out there really beating the bushes. There's a lot of good projects going on, and I'm pleased to see that we're able to use some grant money from the state to further the sewer situation, which gives us more capacity to develop more land, which is a good thing. And lastly, every year I bring up at some point my weekly memo. Each of you get this. It's bi-weekly mostly now with the pandemic, but if you want a heartbeat of Craven County and what we're up to, this report has some great data inside of it. And I just looked at this once as I was sitting over there, and, you know, from where we were, if you go back and find this report from two years ago, where we were with our veterans program, where we are now, number of clients we're seeing, number of money that's coming back from the federal government to our veterans. Our inspections report, I think, is fascinating. You can see where we were kind of starting to tick up a little bit. The economy was getting better. Hurricane Florence happened. Everything went crazy. We did the most inspections we've ever done, and we're now getting back to what I think's a normal growth level in Craven County. But this is a tool, just so you kind of understand how we use it, we look at those inspections and determine how many staff we need. So this provides data, and then when we come to you, you'll see in your budget supplement, they use the same data just to find things that they do within their department. I just encourage you to take a look. If you want to see the pulse of our county, that's certainly where it is. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that's all I have. Let's share things from me.
Questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners' report. We try to alternate with this. Commissioner McCabe.
Yeah, but Chair, I don't have any as present moment.
All right. Commissioner Smith.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Liner.
Sir, I have nothing.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Only one. Mr. Chair, the ACT meetings are going to move to an every other meeting, every other month meeting schedule moving forward. So rather than meeting once every four weeks, essentially, once every eight weeks.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chair Booker.
There's been a lot of concern in our community about Suddenlink and the performance of that organization. The internet quality has been, has been difficult, to say the best, say the least, I should say. It's been, their performance has not been good. Saturday morning, the chairman and I attended a meeting with our Congressman Greg Murphy, who has reached out to Suddenlink and told them in no uncertain terms, so he said, and I believe him, that they better get their act together. And we've had a meeting here with the county manager and chairman and myself, and Assistant County Manager with Suddenlink by, by phone, by Zoom, and they told us that things were going to start happening in our, in our city at least. And I can say that there has been activity, although I don't think we've had any improvement yet, but they've had crews in here working. And of course, Congressman Murphy pretty much said that he is going to keep their feet to the fire. One thing we were a little bit disappointed, and I'm going to let you pick it up from there, there really wasn't much talk about the rural areas. It was pretty much about existing service and improving it. There was some discussion about fiber and bringing fiber into the cities, but didn't really address the rural. At least, I had to leave early, so maybe you can pick it up from there.
Do you, you got anything else you want to?
No.
Okay. Yes, you know, as we all know, the, the fiber, how, how high it is, costly it is to, to get across the county is, I don't think you're going to find any provider that is, desires to do that. So I think with some of the discussions that we have had as staff, you know, doing the broadband and some of the ideas that some of the federal grants that are possibly coming down, I think that's going to be our avenue to go and try to provide internet to rural Craven County. But I, I think out of these discussions, there was two factors in there, regulatory, and that's something that I think our state legislators are going to try to work on. There's some, I think, current laws that are in place that prohibit governmental bodies from doing some of the things that, pushing forward this kind of infrastructure. And, you know, I think everybody kind of said at the meeting Monday, you know, far as the municipality side, is we provide water, we provide electricity, this is a necessity of life too. And, you know, we need to start concentrating on what we can do as municipalities to try to, to give this access. And we feel the same way as the county. We're just in a little bit different situation, the affordability. We're stretched over 700 some square miles versus, you know, the municipalities here are, are, I don't know what you would say, how many miles they are.
20 square miles.
Yes, in distance, so. But I think I was very impressed by Commissioner, former Commissioner Tyson, our new state representative. He championed the idea of what Vice Chair was talking about, is how do we get this access to internet to all citizens? You know, I mean, it's good to talk about it in, in, in certain areas, but we need to concentrate on all of our areas. And, and I'll just give you just a little bit of update. I think all of you know that the General Assembly and the governor, there was 30, what was it, 37, 39 million, somewhere close to $40 million, that was supposed to go out to help governmental bodies to provide internet service through contracts and so forth. We were not a recipient of that here in Craven County. We did do some footwork on that, staff did, in trying to help out some of our rural areas. Y'all were brought up to speed on that some months ago. But I think I was told that there was about 18 counties that had received that funding. It was thought that all of it went to Tier One counties, but that's not the case. Some of it did go to Tier Two counties. We are a Tier Two county, but for some reason or another, we just don't seem like we qualify for a lot of these grants that are coming about. It's not because we're not trying, though. So anything else you want to add? County Manager, you got that?
Yeah, the last thing I'll mention is that they had a guy there from a company called Google Fiber, who is, it's part of, as you can imagine, part of Google, and they're headquartered in North Carolina, Google Fiber. And they're interested in coming in and partnering with cities and counties, I guess, to putting fiber in. This guy made a, he used to be with Suddenlink, and he made an interesting point. He said, COAX is what we have now, and it's obsolete. He said, basically, it's at the end of its life. We've got to get fiber in place in, in the near future because that's what's going to make everything go. And I think we probably knew that, but to hear it from somebody who's in the industry, I thought was interesting. So that was the only other point I wanted to make.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think you said everything I would say. Only, only point I would make is there's still more opportunities for federal money to come here. We're working hard. There was some good news late fall, early winter from a group, Harvest Beam, that's got some FCC licenses. They're going to be deploying a pretty big 5G network in northern Craven County. That's going to be a big first step. It's expandable on down as far as we need to go. It's all about acquiring the licenses, and they have to bid on those from the federal government, which they did and won some. But I'm, I'm keeping track on that. There's obviously the fixed base wireless, which we've been working on for a long time. They're still interested in places like Harlow. The question is, when these folks go out, they do a test in the areas to determine how many people are going to sign up. They have to make sure there's enough revenue coming in to cover the expense and that they don't have to charge, what you noted, one of our big problems is a rate that's affordable by all. And they can scale it, obviously, based on what you need, but that base rate is going to be set on how many people sign up. So that's all I would add.
Commissioner Smith.
I know you've probably said this before, but can you share with me what the difference is between a number, number one tier and two-tier county?
Yes, ma'am. So there's three tiers in North Carolina, and it's based on prosperity. A Tier One would be the bottom 33 counties from a prosperity standpoint, tax base, looking at average income. There's a ton of factors to the department. I guess it's still in commerce. A Tier Two would be the average, and then a Tier Three would be the high-wealth counties. And typically, what you see in the Tier Threes are your resort-based communities, beach, mountain, where they have a strong tax base of second homes and provide very little services to people. For instance, if someone owns a beach house, a million-dollar beach house, they use it two weeks a year and rent it the rest, they require no DSS, no health, no, no schools, no nothing. So that county has more wealth to put toward other things.
The only thing that I would like to add this morning before we adjourn is Commissioner Liner and myself have spent right much time in meetings with the Airport Authority. We both serve on the C Commercial Development Committee. I missed another meeting this week because of a meeting that was called, and a lot of things going on, as you heard this morning. There is some items that are coming up that I think are going to require some time in consideration of this board. time, uh, in consideration of this board. I don't know how the timeframe is going to work, Mr. County Manager, but I think it's probably going to be something that needs to be discussed at a work session. I don't know if, um, you know, we were talking about the acquisition of property this morning. As they said, there's one more piece that they would like to come to us about in acquiring. I don't know how soon that's going to come, and not trying to put the cart before the horse, but I think for this board to really take in what, uh, Commissioner Liner and myself have spent many, many, many hours in trying to understand, y'all going to need more time other than just, uh, a presentation here in 30 minutes. I don't know if we, if it's possible, you know, but I'd just say if we can, it might be something we need to add to our work session. Uh, again, it may be too soon, um, but I think, uh, we're going to, I don't, you know, there's a lot of information out there and a lot of things to consider on this, from this board, uh, going forth, I think, so. All right, anything else to bring for the Board of Commissioners this morning? We've had a long meeting. I thank you all for your participation, and I hope you all have a great week. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second, take that a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned.